Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to our, what is it, May? Our May Board of Supervisors meeting. The supervisors had an executive session beforehand to discuss contractual and legal issues. With that being said, do we have any public comment on any of the agenda items listed here tonight before we take a vote on them?
Yeah, people are lying.
One second. Oh, go ahead, name and.
Oh, Bean is the last name, oh, sorry. To discuss the River Drive situation.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
What was your comment?
Oh, my comment?
Yeah, what was your public comment?
My personal comment is that, you know, it's a very nice neighborhood, I'm not so sure that I like the idea of those molesters. So, my thought is, personally, and what do I know, but I was thinking a three-way stop sign at Meadowbrook. So, if you're on River and then you turn left to go Meadowbrook, not unlike the three-way stop sign at River, Jackson, then it becomes Wheatland, because I just think it's going to make the neighborhood look trashy, personally. And I think that maybe that's how we can start making people really pay attention to the speed limit, because I don't think people are going to be stopped by the molesters, personally. But a stop sign with our new police force giving out tickets would be terrific.
So, my suggestion is going to be that this conversation, I'm sure people have a lot of questions and a lot of comments, but I think the most productive way for this to work would be for maybe give a presentation on the different items that we investigated, what we can do, what we can't do legally, and provide everyone with a general sense of how we got to where we are in terms of this specific set of recommendations. And then, if folks still have questions or comments that aren't answered in that presentation, then we take that, so I could either do the presentation now, or we could open up comments in the middle of the meeting when we get to that, when we get to that specific agenda item. I know that's more unconventional, but without being able to kind of walk through the process, it's going to be hard to address some of the questions that are going to actually come up.
Okay, well, in that case, let's wait until we reach that agenda item, the presentation, and then we'll go right into public comment.
Thank you.
Yes.
I was just going to say, excuse me, that I think we all got a summary of your findings and your plans and so forth as neighbors that was sent out by Ann Cott, and I don't know if she's here. There she is. And I'm Joan Brown, the elderly lady that was plowed down on River Road, so I just want to say.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm fine and well after a long six months, but I just want to thank you and all of you for everything you've done to make the neighborhood more safe for walkers, because I don't want what happened to me to ever happen to anybody else, so, thank you.
With that being said, we'll move on to the Secretary's report, many issues of the last five minutes. Let us off here. Treasury report, April 25.
Fund balances for the month of April, general fund and investment escrow and liability, April balance, $6,805,054. Highway eight fund, $1,416,663.16. Capital reserve fund, $2,609,736.86 for total April balance, $10,831,455.11.
Right, well, uh, brought it.
I'm wondering if I have the last one. I wish I did.
Paying the bills.
Bills, general fund, total $351,321.88. Escrow fund, $721.51. Highway fund, $12,473.21. Capital reserve fund, total of $210,466.87 for total bills of $574,983.47. Mr. Chair, I move that we pay the bills.
Oh, so, the motion, it is in favor, Speaker, may I say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Reports, Lafayette Fire Company, East Side, April 25, we have seven calls for service in Lancaster Township. Lancaster Township Fire Department, April 25, 36 calls in Lancaster Township and 153 calls here today, anyone from the fire department?
Not much else in the report, relatively steady month for us. We do have a community day coming up, May 31st, that's 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., public stop, stop by the station, and we'll mingle. We did a little bit of property damage at the firehouse, our new digital sign was ran over by a automobile, and we're in the process of working through that with insurance, and we'll give you an update when more information is available. We did participate in a joint training with our neighbors to the east, Lafayette Fire Company, we provided six guys, we did a joint live-fire training with them, which was very beneficial. We did receive some correspondence from the township manager in regards to our stormwork basin, there are a couple bullet points on there which are being addressed and working with the contractor to get those resolved. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Safety questions? All right. Recycling for April 25, 20 percent of trash was recycled, safety committee minutes for March 25, two reports, afternoon copies of all reports are available on Township Office for a nominal PA could be due after different reports. We're now moving on into workshop reports. First up, planning, Mr. John.
Good evening. So, see, tonight you have a few items on the agenda for action, most of those I believe you're already familiar with, have been around for a while. The only kind of big thing going for me right now is grass is growing like crazy, and we're getting lots of complaints, and we're proactively looking for those problems, and we're getting quite a few, so, as a reminder for residents to keep their grass mowed, outside of that, please.
The house on Lordus Road, we're going to burn down over the winter, I know obviously it's going to be abandoned property, but what's the maintenance?
They're still responsible, because to our knowledge, still own it, so they're responsible until that changes, we actually have them on our list, so we're working on them.
I actually had someone reach out to me about that as well.
Okay.
All right, township in here, Val.
Yes, good evening. Pretty significant thing happening tonight relative to roadway dedication. So, you'll see in the agenda under Hawthorne Ridge, there's a whole list of roads that are on the agenda for potential approval to accept them as roads, they meet all of our criteria, there's 17 roads. If you look at the names of the roads, they are all authors and philosophers, interestingly enough, as part of the Hawthorne Ridge development, and that was first submitted in 2002, almost 25 years ago, and in 2005, the plans were recorded, a year later, the developer switched, and they split off the Hawthorne Gardens apartments from the project, some of that worked well, some of that didn't. But by 2008, all of the infrastructure was installed and the homes were being built, you might recall the real estate bubble, you know, popped that year, and that led to some problems. But by 2012, Lennar, the new developer, had constructed the majority of the houses, and they were, thought they were done, but there was quite a lot of work that remained to be completed, including wearing course of the roads, which took another six years, so, 2018, the wearing course paving went down. And here we are, was it seven years later, and we're looking at dedication finally, there's just been a lot of things, we've just been pulling Lennar through to get all these things done. We still have a financial security on the development as a whole, but the roads are, I'm recommending that the roads are ready for dedication. We have an 18-month maintenance guarantee, financial bond from Lennar, so that if we find any deficiencies are visible during the next 18 months, we will be able to use the financial security to make repairs if they don't choose to. But there are 17 roads, that's roughly 2.8 miles of road, that's a 6% increase in our roadway stock, so it's pretty substantial, it's been quite a serpentine path to get to where we are today, but I'm very, very glad that we're finally where we're at, we can begin enforcement of a lot of things we haven't been able to enforce in a while, we'll start taking over maintenance of various things, both in summer and then in winter, so it's a pretty significant thing. In terms of my regular work, the Wedgewood Sewell Project is coming to a conclusion at the end of this month, we are working with some of the adjoining property owners to try to resolve several of their concerns, but we do have a 12-month maintenance period guarantee from the contractor after the end of the project. Also been working with Devon on the 2025 paving project contract, the recent rains and new projects getting started really revealed a lot of problems with erosion control measures, so I've been out multiple times and insisting that contractors are following their erosion control plans, and some of them are receiving that news a little better than others, but we're keeping after everybody to get things done. The Little Conestoga Blue Green Corridor project is relatively visible to anybody traveling on Marietta Pike heading over into East Temfield, and frankly, it looks like a war zone right now. But please rest assured that there will be a lot of plantings that are going to be put in to help with that floodplain restoration habitat. Also had an unfortunate call from DEP, they asked for our help to stop an illicit discharge coming from a property over on the east side, I believe the property owner is taking steps to address things, but we've been in lockstep with DEP to make sure that the problem is addressed, so that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. We got public work to step through.
Thank you. I don't got a whole lot for you, the guys have been working hard as they always have, been doing, we're going to our building projects over here before paving, as has been pointed out, we're getting ready for our big paving project that will be in the business out for subcontractors for tree tending and curb work coming through the Wilson Avenue neighborhood over there. In addition to that, I've met with a couple of folks over last month, one of those is DEP Emily with the Tree Tenders Group, they'll be doing a little program in the community park, I thought that was a good point to mention them. Few bigger items coming up that I've been mentioning here for a while is the 741 bridge closure, in speaking with PennDOT, they have pushed that closure out another week, the anticipated date for that closure is June 6th now, which will then push the detour all the way around, people will start to see those detour signs go up this week, PA One Call was put in, so they'll be eligible to put them signs up at the end of this week, including the turning arrow at.
Hershey.
Hershey. So, that'll be going up there for that directional traffic. In addition to that, I've been reached out to by the county this month, they would like to close down Stone Mill Road, it was a surprise to us, we got the email a week ago, week and a half ago, that they wanted to close this down and do some 30 to 45 days worth of work to reepoxy code the bridge, in speaking with the county, working back and forth with understanding the closure planned at the same time for the 741 bridge, I spoke with the maintenance head over there, Mr. Devonshire, he worked with the contractor, they sped up that program specifically for that bridge so that they could get in there starting May 19th and be out of there in 10 to 14 days, so that it doesn't overlap with the road closure, understanding there's going to be some overlap there, so I'm hoping that all works out, and I'm hoping we don't have any issues, we've communicated with everybody we can at this point, and we've said everything we can, which is just going to have to happen here in June. We have all the contact for PennDOT, and we'll provide that to the residents and the community as they call them, and that's all I got for you guys. Got any questions?
All right, next up, please chief.
Please, Chief. Good evening. So, for April, we had 494 calls for service, the first quarter through April, that's a total of 1,784 calls for service. For April, we had 30 crashes, year-to-date is 105 crashes, no fatal crashes. In April, we issued 183 traffic citations, for the year so far, it's 471 total traffic citations, 19 written traffic warnings, in April for the year, it's 171 written traffic warnings, 20 misdemeanor felony arrests for April, year-to-date is 61, three DUI arrests for April, year-to-date is 13, six non-traffic citations in April, and year-to-date is 20, and no overdose incidents or fatalities in April, year-to-date. Just to let the public know a little bit more, obviously, it's been publicized some, but we had our ribbon cutting April 14th, officially, we moved in and are doing business next door at 12:50, maybe three days later, I think it was like the 17th of April, so our office hours, obviously, we're 24/7, 365 days a year, police department, but the front door lobby area will be open 8 to 4, Monday through Friday, there's instructions on the outside, if you would need a police officer outside of 8 to 4, you would contact Lancaster County Dispatch, the phone number is right outside the door, obviously, if it's an emergency, dial 911, but if it's something that can wait, you're just coming in to file a report, you pull on the door, it's 4:30 p.m., it's locked, there's going to be instructions there to call Lancaster County Radio, and they'll dispatch an officer to either come from inside, if there happens to be one inside out to you, or dispatch to meet you at the front of the building. If I could give a reminder, probably since I started here, since the police department started January till April, we've probably had about six or seven stolen vehicles, every single one of them, the vehicle was unlocked and the keys were left in the car, so if I could stress, no one's ringing up the car with a screwdriver like you think or anything, so, if you can lock your cars, take your keys inside, we'd appreciate it. And just another reminder, our Crime Watch portal is up and running, it gives you a lot of stuff to read about, to interact with us, it's LancasterTownshipPolice.org, it will take you, if you punch that in your internet search, it'll take you right to our Crime Watch portal, you can subscribe to it, but there's a lot of avenues, you can see arrests, you can see warrants we have, you can compliment an officer, you can get a crash report, you can file a complaint, there's lots of different things if you want to get on there and look around on that Crime Watch portal, so, that's all I have.
Chief.
Yep.
Questions? All right, next up, township manager, Mr. Law, good evening.
I don't have anything other than what's on your agenda.
All right, announcements, Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, primary elections, I mean, here at 12:40, April Ave, but also in your, wherever your ministry is located. Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. is the next planning commission meeting at 12:40, Maple Ave, the date was changed from May 20th due to the primary elections at the municipal building. Monday, May 26th, Memorial Day, our township office is closed. Tuesday, May 27th, the zoning hearing board meeting is canceled due to a lack of agenda items. Monday, June 2nd, at 6:30, is the historical commission meeting here at 12:40, Maple Ave. Monday, June 16th, at 6:00 p.m. is our next Board of Supervisors meeting here at 12:40, Maple Ave, the original meeting was on June 9th, but was moved to June 16, 2025. All right, now we're going into old business. Of a road improvements.
All right. So, I'm going to start by, I'm going to speak to both the board and the audience, if that's okay, I'm going to start by saying, when I started doing this work in the late 1990s, early 2000s, Walmart was being proposed over near the Woods Ed Plaza, and we had a full room, and everybody was concerned about the traffic implications of having a Walmart on Columbia Avenue, which was a reasonable concern, and the traffic engineer was in there, and people were asking about congestion, and he was getting ready to give a presentation on traffic volume and traffic counts, but he opened by saying, everyone's concerned about congestion, as far as I'm concerned, there's no such thing as congestion, and then they wanted to pick him up and carry him out in tar and feather. So, he was speaking from a technical standpoint and not from a conversational one, so, as I go into this, I want to be, I don't want to be tar and feathered, I would prefer not to have that happen, so, I'm going to talk a little bit about the 85th percentile speed and speed as it relates to PennDOT standards. PennDOT generally feels that until something gets 11 miles an hour over the posted speed limit, it doesn't require any radical intervention, that doesn't mean that people should speed, it doesn't mean that there's not a speeding problem on River Road, because I think we're all here tonight because we recognize that there is a problem, so as I talk through these issues, just kind of bear with me, and if you want to yell at me at the end, that's great.
Can I correct you quickly?
Yes, sir.
It's River Drive.
River Drive, I apologize.
It's in the paper as River Drive, and it made me, as River Road, it made me think there might not be a lot of people here, because they read River Road.
All right, I apologize.
In the Sunday paper.
For saying that the wrong way, yeah, River Drive.
This is right.
So, if we can start, I'll kind of follow along with the slides, let's just go to the next one, that's great, keep going. All right, so, we all met in the fall, a number of you were here, we had a commitment to taking some immediate steps and then taking some steps as we went along, what we've done almost immediately is the police have been out and in the neighborhood, I would hope that, like a lot of people have reached out to me, there's been a greater police presence all over the township, with emphasis on stop sign enforcement, speed enforcement, just a general presence. Mannheim Township did a good job for us as a police force, but clearly, we're seeing the benefits of having our own force in terms of being able to be attentive to residents' concerns and questions, and as well as just having more manpower on a daily basis, we have three or four officers on all the time roaming, the chief is an active working chief, you see he's in uniform today, he's in uniform every day driving around township, and we have a detective present and on-site who's out in the community as well, so, we have run stop sign details in school lane hills, on the streets and neighborhoods where there's been some concern, we've done that on a warning basis initially, just to kind of let people know that they've got to be attentive when they're driving through the neighborhood, and there was a lot of talk about cut-through traffic, and I think it's safe to say that we had as many folks that the officers talked to who were from the neighborhood themselves as there were from people from outside the area, so just bringing awareness to everyone has been really helpful. You may have noticed some white lines on the ground, we've identified nine locations, collector roads throughout the township that we've set up as speed enforcement zones, we're going to start checking those on a regular basis and citing folks, we have another 18 locations that we're going to roll out over the course of time, those are being prioritized based on traffic volume and the information that we're getting from the speed centuries that we have set out all over the place, so, now that we have our own police force, now we have greater control of what we do, we're trying to take a little bit more of an analytical and methodological approach to figure out how we can best use our resources. And then the last piece of this is we're starting to dabble with some resources that are available to give us, not exactly real-time coverage, but the same sort of information you get when you go on the Waze or Google, is available, so we can also see the impact of what was speed last week, then we did speed detail, and what was the impact of speed the following week after we did a speed detail or had an officer post it, so, we're still trying to figure out the mechanics of that, but we think that we're going to be able to continue to use that data alongside of the speed centuries which you see out, I think they're on Wilson today, but we have two sets and they're constantly moving around collecting data. This bears repeating, you've probably heard me say it before, but when the signs are off, the signs are still working, so we run the signs both on with a visible display that tells you how fast you're going, but we also, they're also continuing to collect data when we turn the signs off, and we try to compare, you know, how accurate the data is when the display is on and how accurate, or how consistent it is when the display is off, so, and the last little bit of that, and the third bullet point is talk about improving data collection methods internally, and that is, we want to make sure Those are being prioritized based on traffic volume and the information that we're getting from the speed sentries that we have set out all over the place. So now that we have our own police force, now we have greater control of what we do. We're trying to take a little bit more of an analytical and methodological approach to figure out how we can best use our resource, our resources. And then the last piece of this is we're starting to dabble with some resources that are available to give us, not exactly real-time coverage, but the same sort of information you get when you go on the Waze or Google, is available. So we can also see the impact of what was speed last week, then we did speed detail, and what was the impact of speed the following week after we did a speed detail or had an officer posted. So we're still trying to figure out the mechanics of that, but we think that we're going to be able to continue to use that data alongside of the speed sentries which you see out. I think they're on Wilson today, but we have two sets and they're constantly moving around collecting data. This bears repeating, you've probably heard me say it before, but when the signs are off, the signs are still working. So we run the signs both on with a visible display that tells you how fast you're going, but we also, they're also continually collect data when we turn the signs off, and we try to compare, you know, how accurate the data is when the display is on and how accurate, or how consistent it is when the display is off. So, and the last little bit of that, and the third bullet point is talk about improving data collected, data collection methods internally, and that is, we want to make sure we're putting out those speed sentry signs at different times of the year, in the same locations, for the same amount of times, with displays on and off, in a consistent basis. So when we have, one thing we found as we went through these data sets, sometimes they were set up in one location on the same street, another time they were two blocks over. And what we found is, that makes a world of difference, that the data gets really inconsistent, especially on some place like River Drive, where the speed's coming northbound down the hill from Jackson and Wheatland is significantly different than what we see maybe over between Center and Ridge. So that's what we've, that's what we've been doing. Next slide, please. Great, so this is the part where I get tar and feathered. The southbound traffic, which is coming from Marietta toward Columbia on River, we have nine data points that we think are valid from 2019 through 2024. The aggregate average, or the aggregate 85th percentile speed is 31 miles an hour. The very top speed we collected was in 2019. We had, we had a data set that showed an 85th percentile speed of 34.7 miles an hour. The lowest we had in 2019 was 25.6 miles an hour. That seems implausibly low. And the last two samples that we've had in 2022 and 2024 were 34.4, 31.44 and 32.01 miles an hour. And again, that's, that's southbound. Most of those were between Meadow Brook and Center, but they were in various locations. Northbound, we set up twice in 2024 and once in 2019, and we set up just where the accident, near where the accident occurred, at the intersection of Meadow Brook and River. That was substantially higher, it was 34.07 and 34.49. Again, that's, especially given the site distance there for the folks coming in and out of the intersection with the curve and with pedestrian traffic, that's too high, but still below PennDOT's threshold of what they think for like some sort of radical intervention. That was unfortunate. We took two samples there because we were pushing for the recommendation that was made here tonight, for a three-way stop sign. We thought that our biggest conflict in general, or our highest speeds in general, are downhill coming up to that intersection. And we pushed and cajoled PennDOT as best we could to try to get them to approve warrants for a stop sign at that location. And they were, they were sympathetic to the idea, but in no way did the crash data or the speed data justify a stop sign at that location. And that's just the way it is. We did look at, there were some folks who had asked us to take a look at speed bumps or speed tables, or however you want to call them. They were problematic for a couple of reasons, and again, bear with me here. Typically, you want curbs there at those locations, because you don't want people coming up to the speed bump and driving into people's yards. There are certain locations where you can't put the speed tables in because of either slopes or site distance or curves, and that's pretty much problematic for that entire route along River. The one space that we did find that we could probably get them in would be in a stretch between ridge, like right around on either side of Ridge, but you have to be like 100, I think it's 150 feet from each intersection. You can't have slopes, you can't have curves. And that happened to be the place where we had the slowest speeds on the entire stretch of road. The other problem there, and I think someone here already tonight had mentioned, and we've gotten emails about people being concerned about changing the character of the neighborhood, or how the traffic improvements would change the way school lane hills looks in general. And I would agree. If you go over to Farmington Road, which is brought up a number of times as a recommendation on what we might want to try, you'll see that the amount of signage and pavement markings and, and it just, it no longer looks like a neighborhood, it starts to look like a thoroughfare. Combine that with the fact that, and this is the main point I want to get to, the real conflicts I feel we have, and the conflicts that I've gotten in the correspondence that people have provided us, has been conflicts not between vehicle on vehicle. We've had, we've had no vehicle on vehicle accidents as a result of speed, or even single vehicle accidents. We've had no single vehicle accidents going off the road or losing control. The conflicts are between vehicles and pedestrians. And, and so, once we realized that, we shifted our focus away from primarily looking at controlling speed, although we think that some of the, some of the recommendations that we have are going to have a significant impact on decreasing speed. Our focus became, how can we make things safer for pedestrians? And that's where we are today. So our recommendations are really focused on primarily making pedestrians safe, secondarily using those techniques to lower speed. And if we can only, if we can get speed lowered three miles an hour, five miles an hour, I think it makes all the difference in the world. So if we, I don't know where we are. Okay, got it. Great, so what we're proposing is a lane shift, where we move, we narrow the lanes, the travel lanes, down to nine feet, and we shift the lanes toward the riverside. What that would allow us to do is have the, to have a four or five-foot shoulder on the non-riverside of the road, and use that as effectively a sidewalk. It would be an on-cart pedestrian space that would be segregated from the vehicular traffic and in some way protected from the vehicular traffic. In order to do that, in order to get, we don't want to completely remove the shoulder from the riverside, right? We need to have a shoulder, we don't want car tires going off the road, we don't want people, we don't want vehicles in people's yards. There's been some, rightfully so, some concerns about leaf collection and how we manage that. So we want to leave a little bit of a shoulder on the, on the westbound, on the westbound side of the road. So in order to get a foot and a half shoulder on the westbound side of the road, to have a nine-foot travel cartway, to get the lines we need to do that, we want ourselves four to five feet on the eastbound side of the road. Devin went out and measured.
Can you clarify east and west, which side?
Riverside would be westbound.
As in the river?
As in, yeah. So Devin went out and measured, and by luck or the grace of God, or however you want to say it, we have road width for almost the entire length from Wheatland to Center, with the exception of, Devin, can you highlight the couple of spots where we need a little extra road width?
Near Ridge, probably.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's up here, right here near Center. We have some narrow, narrow width. We need a minimum of 25 feet.
What number of house is that? I can't see it, I'm sorry.
Sure.
That is 174, 177 River.
Thank you.
So 170, my eyes are terrible too, 174 I think is a 23 feet, and 177 is it like 22 or something?
Three inches, yeah.
So we'd have to look at trying to get a little additional road width there, or we just live, we just live with the fact that we know that the cartway is going to be a little less than five feet in order to, you know, there's still enough room to get by, but we're trying to meet the ADA standard of five feet, allowing people to go in opposite directions and have sufficient width so no one has to go on the road or into somebody's yard. So we think that we can achieve a small shoulder, sufficient travel lanes for traffic, and then a protected shoulder on the other side of the road. So if you can bring up the next slide. This is, this is, if you've probably seen this online, if you haven't seen it, animated, I think it's helpful. I may have you go through this and then go back. So this is the current conditions. What we would propose doing is shifting the lanes, so we move everything toward the riverside. You can see how we open up that corridor for pedestrians on the other, oop, look at that.
Do you want that?
Yeah, how about we go through the graphics?
Is this just by painting it?
Just by painting it. And then what we're proposing doing is adding some additional features, and this is where we're looking for public input. We think, we think the crosswalk's essential. It notifies the motorists both on River as well as those coming from the side roads, that they are entering the space where they should expect to see pedestrians, and it provides a safe sheltered space for pedestrians. I mean, even though there's a stop sign and a stop bar, say, coming from, coming from Center or coming from Meadow Brook, just there's that extra paint in the road lets all the motorists know that they should be expecting and looking out for pedestrians. Let's go to the next slide. We think that reflectors in and along the white line also has a visual cue to motorists and delineates further for, further for the pedestrians, that this is your side of the road, and this is the motoring side of the road. And the last piece would be bollards. That's, that's the thing that John Donnelly's holding up there. We initially talked about putting those all along the stretch. We think that starts to get into that realm where it's going to change the character of the neighborhood. But, but we do feel, internally at least, we do feel that, that at the spots where the vehicles are coming onto River or leaving River, that having a couple of bollards on either side of those intersections says to the, to the pedestrians, you are now in a safe space where you can walk, and says to the motorists, this is a safe space for pedestrians. You can't cut the corner, you know, you have to come out and, and get around this road furniture in order to get into your travel lane. And we think that those bollards set up, a couple, few of those at each of the intersections provide safety. The other place that we propose putting them is on the downhill section, coming from Wheatland and Jackson, down the hill, at a couple of locations, just to prevent people in that area where they might be inclined to have a higher rate of speed from cutting the curb, from cutting the corner. It forces them to stay in their lane and reduce their speed. So at the very least, moving the lanes, the reflectors and the crosswalk, I think is important. Whether we do or don't do the bollards is really, to me, up for discussion. And one last caveat, and that would be, you may notice that these are a little bit different than the ones you may have seen before, which are the straight-up ones that when you hit them, they flop down. These are a little bit more substantial in providing protection. But more importantly, Devin, if you could show the bottom of them.
Yeah.
So these screw in and out of the road, we drill into the pavement, we put the receiver hitch into the road, and then the bollards get screwed in.
That's flush mounted in the ground.
Right. So we'd like to go to this design, because what this allowed us to do is, once we get leaf collection season, once we get into the winter season, we would take the bollards out. That's kind of a signal to pedestrians that like you're a little bit on your own, but what allows us to do is, it gives us a little bit more space when we get into leaf collection season, and it gives us a little more space when we go into winter maintenance, that the plow's heat from curb to curb and clear the road off entirely. So it's not a perfect solution, but I think it finds a nice balance between not radically changing the neighborhood, but affording some protections that aren't currently in place. And that's where we're at.
I just have a question.
Let's start with questions from you guys.
So we're going to pivot over to the public for any questions.
So from a walking standpoint, so whether you're walking, everybody would just be walking on one side now?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understand.
Now typically, we would discourage anybody from walking the wrong way.
Right.
Or actually, we always want to walk against traffic, is a better way to say it. But, but PennDOT does recognize that this is, this is an appropriate thing to do in a segregated travel lane for pedestrians to have two-way traffic. We're going to have to go through the federal standards for marking to make sure that we mark this sufficiently to both inform people and prepare people for what they're dealing with. But we're going to try to minimize the amount of signage and on-pavement markings so as not to change the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. So we talked, is it from Jackson to Center or?
So, and I don't want to be rude, but we do take minutes, so if you can just always make sure you can say just what your name is.
Oh, Dr. Campbell.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, we're going to go from, we're going to go from, I don't want to say this, from the south side of Center, for now, from the south side of Center up to the intersection with Wheatland and Jackson. We recognize that doesn't get you all the way to Marietta, but we think this is a good first step. Going from, going from the south side of, of Center to Marietta may be in the works, but we have a couple of other things, as you've seen, going on over there. If the trailhead for the Blue Green Corridor comes in, we're already obligated to build a sidewalk on the riverside of that parcel. That house comes down, a pavilion gets built, it's a trailhead with parking, et cetera, et cetera. So we kind of want to see where we're going with that, because what we would do is then have a crossing, a crosswalk across River at Center. And then be able to connect the pedestrian traffic all the way over to the bridge that goes into East End. So that's one possibility. And then whether we do this at other locations, or whether we roll this out or have this connected, depends on how effective this is and what we learn from this process. And then, as we show on this slide here, it also depends upon road widths and whether there's already existing sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. So I think back in October when we talked about this, I said, you know, we're going to try to take an incremental process, make improvements, learn from those improvements, and then roll those out further as we, as we are. So that's what we're attempting to do.
What made this come up? The injury?
Yes, sir.
Is that all?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm in a room filled with people who express concerns about feeling unsafe walking along the road.
Oh, is that right? Okay, well, I've probably been out on River Drive more than any of you.
Can we get a name and address, please?
I take care of the greats.
He's asking, he's asking for your name.
And Mailey, at the confluence of the bottom of River and Meadow Brook. Everybody brings their stuff, all their latest, all their friends. It's a tremendous job at certain times, and I go out in an umbrella, order up to here because it floods, floods my lawn. I mean, I'm very serious about the fact that I've probably done more than anybody here. When people come down, I can hear them coming down, I just turn around and wave to them, and they think I'm waving to them. I'm just making sure they see me. They all go around, I have not, I know this accident was terrible. I don't recall any like that in 28, or 39 years. So I just wonder how much of it is a problem of people walking. People walk, they have a dog, they just, you know, people walking. You've mentioned so many accidents, but that was like a sort of township, right? Not River. I, I just think that that stuff, you know, I guess the walkways are okay, but that stuff sticking up is, I think ruins the appearance of the area. It's a very beautiful river. River is a very beautiful street, and from, especially from Marietta to Jackson. And everyone's doing their best to make it that way, and I don't know, all of a sudden it becomes a big city, let's go to Philly. You know, I'm sorry, I disagree with you.
My name is Tom Brown, 68 Oak Lane. My wife is the one that got hit. The guy that hit her didn't see two women and five dogs standing against the Pacifist Sandra. They weren't over the white line at all.
Okay.
So, I mean, what can I tell you?
I agree with that, too. They go across the yellow line when they go up the hill. What's the difference with the white line? Are you going to put a fence up, or? I don't know, I just think it ruins the character of the street.
Well, you should have been with us for the last six months, is all I can tell you.
Okay, that's not relevant to the subject. White lines there do not change anything. So I greatly appreciate, I know what you went through. I'm North Beach, Jersey, by the way. I know all that.
I really know.
I took care of one guy who had 20 feet into his yard, run over. Three of our places have been hit. Yeah, there are white lines there. The Big Sycamore out front was hit, went through all our plantings when we first moved in. It's, you come down there fast.
Just, just any comments, please, direct them to the board.
Thank you.
Next up.
I appreciate, Dan White, my wife and I live at 161 Wilson, which is right where Center comes into Wilson Drive. We've lived there for 30-some years, and I don't, I know you don't want to get, this isn't intended to be a debate, but I do want to comment on excellent presentation. We do walk every evening, and of course, at this time of the year, it's prime time in the conflict between vehicular traffic and those of us who walk our dog or our grandkids. It is an issue. And, and I am, my wife and I have been disappointed that it's taken so, an accident as tragic or nearly tragic as this to bring this forward, because most of us who have lived in school lane hills for a long time have walked in fear about something like this happening. And I live on Wilson Drive, and I walk on River, and I walk on Meadow Brook, which is where our grandkids live. And I don't, we don't walk on those streets because we're scared. In fact, we don't want our grandkids, when they come to our house on Wilson, to have to walk back to Meadow Brook, because there's nowhere to go. They can't walk up Wilson, because I think that's a concerned area. And they don't walk on River because of the, you know, the curbs and the fact that there's nowhere for them to go. I, while I know this is a topic about River, I think, to me honestly, Wilson is scarier. And I would applaud something that you would, I'm very curious to see, when you're, when you did your assessment of high-risk areas, where are the other high-risk areas? And I think many of us who live in the township would be very interested in hearing also And I think many of us who live in the township would be very interested in hearing also what your plan is to mitigate the risk there. Because I think most of us do walk in fear
Yes.
Uh, for ourselves, our animals, our grandkids. And I think anything that you can do to help to mitigate that risk would be welcomed.
Thank you. Uh, next question or comment?
Josh.
We'll, we'll go with her, then we'll go with you.
Yeah, Ann Cott. Um, and I just, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to Bill, um, and Devin and Tony for all of the work that has gone into, you know, researching this for us and for the communication. Um, and for, for following the best practices that are laid out by PNDOT and, and really going through, um, you know, research-based recommendations. Um, I just want to again echo what my neighbor said about a huge group of people living in school lane hills that's not represented tonight, and that is children. Um, and what you're recommending would be life-changing for families like mine that have young children and want to be able to use River Drive, um, for, for walking. So, I just, I, I think everything you've recommended, including the bollards, and I hear everyone saying that that would change the character of the neighborhood. I live right on Meadow Brook and River. I would look at that every day. And I hear you, it's, it's not the same as having our just beautiful Sycamore line street. But I think that, you know, keeping our kids safe, keeping our neighbors safe is, is the most important thing. And I really appreciate everything you've done to, to make the recommendations and lay this out, and just fully support what you said.
Josh Richards. I'm at 60 Jackson Drive, uh, down toward the bottom of the hill. And I, personally, I like this idea, giving a dedicated walking space. And I would invite you to look into taking that all the way down Jackson to the light so that corridor where people drive is the same all the way along there.
So, uh, I'm glad you brought up Jackson and, and Wilson as well. Um, so, we've, we've started to take a look at all our collector roads and see what are the, what are the similarities and differences between them. Uh, in many other areas of the township, we have segregated walkways. Wheatland's a good example where there's sidewalks outside of the cartway. Um, and that, not that we're not concerned about speeding on, on Wheatland, but like, that becomes a lower priority in terms of those conflicts because there are facilities available. Um, it's our feeling as a staff that the area between Ridge and Marietta on Wilson is a problem due to the poor sight distance and the regular occurrence of work trucks and vehicles parked there. Um, I'm really focused for tonight on this presentation, but I think I, I mentioned in an email to, to you, and, and we've talked about it a little bit internally, proposing no parking on Wilson from, uh, from Ridge to Marietta. That's a different legal process that, that requires an ordinance change. And I want to make sure that if we're gonna go in that direction, that we notify the adjoining property owners so we can ascertain the impact on them in terms of, of, of parking. That brings us to Jackson. Um, Jackson's a little bit problematic and I don't have the same width that we have on River in order to be able to create this sort of lane. So, we've talked about restricting parking to one side or another. As we go through, we're trying to take counts on a regular basis as to how many people are parking and how many people have off-street parking. Um, Jackson, when you get closer and closer to Columbia, you start to run in higher and higher speeds. And so, right now, we're looking at, well, I think one of the other locations, as, as an aside, one of the other locations where we have a speed enforcement setup is, is on Wilson. Is that correct? Is that one of the areas that we painted? So, again, police presence, enforcement, um, is our first step to try and mitigate that. But long-term, I'd love to see some sort of solution. I just don't know what we do in Jackson to get that same sort of width.
There's a lot of, I've seen a lot of people walking River, Jackson, and going to Giant. Right, yeah. And just, when I'm working out on my yard, I'll park a car on the street just to keep cars away from me. But I, yeah, I'd love to see this type of thing go all the way from one end to the other of that traffic corridor.
Yes, yes. We'll, we'll start here and we'll see what we learn and where it works and where it doesn't, or what works and what doesn't. We'll try to emulate where it works.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Tyler Swire, and I'm at 101 River. Um, and I would say I've, I've only been there for two years, but I, I'm home pretty much all day. And where I sit, I see the traffic. I pretty much have the 360-degree view from my desk. Um, so I'm excited to see the marks that were put down for the police officers. Um, I mean, just today, I was out in my yard and a motorcycle came probably sixty miles an hour down the hill. So, I, I go between DC and here, so I, moving here, I had no idea that there'd be so much traffic. I think that the wider lanes are a fantastic idea. I'm out walking every day, as well as my neighbors. I think the widening is great. I think my only concern, and you can maybe clarify, are the bollards. Because as I go to DC, and I've been there for eight years, I, I see these bollards and I, I see how much of an eyesore they can become or how damaged they can get. Um, and so, you know, it, like some others have said, the integrity of the neighborhood, um, they're not the nicest to look at. So, I guess my question is, like, will they be going like at the corners and not the whole? Like, I'm just thinking, I'm looking out my window and the whole way across the front of my house, I'm gonna be seeing white poles. So, I guess if you could clarify that for me.
Well, I, 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 we've, we've done the whole damn with how far we should space them apart. And, and I think what we've landed on, and I'm looking for direction from the board, but what we've kind of landed on now is just at the intersections and, and depending on how they're spaced out, either two or three on each side of the intersection, um, preventing, again, cars from trying to cut the corner and indicating that, you know, when you step between the two
Sure, yeah.
items, that you're in the pedestrian lane.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a much better option. I mean, I will tell you, and I mean, I've seen some of these out here, that I do still think that you will see that they are getting damaged, people at night taking the turns or whatnot. But I think that makes me feel better knowing that it's the corners. I think the pucks, I don't know if that's what they're called, but having those the whole way along, I mean, I think that's a great idea. Um, I just, yes, I think the corners and like the wider lanes, I think, are great, you know? So, I think that's a good option.
All right, we got...
Yeah. So, my name's Elaine Malcolm. I live at 102 Jackson. And I think that what everybody is saying has such truth on both sides, I'm saying. There's lots of different ways to look at this. I think the bollards and all, and by the way, I appreciate everything you've done. This is not a criticism in any way. I think that there is a way to have safety and aesthetics be your goal. Um, and the ba, and having those ballots all along the road, I'm not saying that's what you're gonna do, would be a real eyesore as well. My concern or question, I guess I should say, is by shifting the pedestrians to one side and narrowing the roads, how is that going to slow down the drivers?
Well, physical, I mean, at, at, at least according to the studies that we've provided by Federal Transportation Authority and by PNDOT, is by narrowing the cartway visually, as well as narrowing, having two-way traffic in closer proximity to each other, it forces drivers to, to slow down. Um, and having road furniture in the road is also, again, channeling traffic into an narrower space. And, uh, we hear, we hear the, anecdotally, we hear the opposite. When we pave a road, when we widen a road or pave a road, we get calls immediately that we've created a drag strip or a racetrack or this big opens. Now, a lot of times, we're making those sort of road improvements to make it safer for motorists, right? We're widening the sight distance, we're widening the cartway. But, but with, with all that, with all that openness, I think it encourages people to go quicker. And by reducing the width of the cartway visually, it, it forces folks to slow down. We've actually had a lot of luck and, and a lot of success in just painting roads differently without all these other improvements and getting people to slow down. And in fact, we did that initially on River. If you go back ten years ago, there weren't any lines. Um, so I think we had a positive impact to some degree. But, but, but again, it's, it's, it's more a matter of what kind of impact are we gonna have for pedestrians because there's no place to walk.
Right. So, so the second part of my comment or question, I guess I should say, is you mentioned Farming Dale, I think is the road. You said it's like, um, I, I, my understanding of, I was told, when I called a number of times early on when we arrived here, that putting in speed humps just makes people drive faster, which I thought was a little ludicrous. But, um, that, that being said, um, I reached out, and I think I sent it to you, and I know it's sort of late in the game, or maybe it's not late in the game. The city of Boston has done amazing. They're putting in 500 speed humps. And I called them and spoke to them, and I said, "Tell me the truth. Do you guys really like this? Or is this just something that people that, you know, were voted in said we're gonna do? And here's the reality of it all." They said, "No, we don't have any problems with it. Doesn't affect snowplows, doesn't affect leaf, it doesn't affect sweeping, it doesn't affect anything. It's slowing traffic down." And so, my question to you is, why is that not still a part of the possibility?
Uh, I'll do that how I started this, which is, uh, I'm not saying that we, there aren't situations where we need to control speed. We do know that occasionally, we're looking at vehicles going forty-five or thirty miles an hour from time to time, but, but we see that as an enforcement issue. We identify what are, what, when are the times when people are driving fast, and then we put police out there and enforce. Um, on a, on a day-to-day basis, on an eighty-fifth percentile basis, on a strictly evaluative basis, uh, it, it doesn't require that level of intervention. The conflict here is pedestrians and vehicles are our focuses.
And are you mandated to follow the PNDOT?
We are.
You are? Because I think East Hemphill went and put those in even though it wasn't. They, they could go around it, so, that was my question. Like, I see a lot of smiles on your face, so, so it's in your bylaws or something? Is that East Hemphill?
East Hemphill does a lot of things.
Right. And I'm asking, do they, are they, I know you can't speak for them, but are you legally bound to not follow PNDOT? Let's say, okay, we're gonna lower it to eighty percent, ninety, eighty-fifth percentile because this is the way we can solve something that...
With every action we take or don't take, there's an assumed risk and responsibility that we have. And each community can step outside of what the recommended practices are and assume that risk. I, I think what we're doing here is a
So, we're talking about liability, which, I understand, okay.
Um, so, I guess the thing I would ask for, and, and maybe this is a half medium. Um, we could, we could schedule and do the line painting. We can install the reflective strips. We can do the crosswalks. And then maybe, um, I haven't even talked to you about this, and I hope this is okay, but, but maybe we, we do bollards at one intersection and take a look at how that goes visually, get some feedback from some of the folks in the room, and, and if they're unsightly, or they don't work, or they're overkill. I mean, the great things about these is we just take them out and, and patch the, the receiver. Uh, but if they, but if they are not unpleasant and are effective, then we look at all of them around, you know, the intersection. Maybe we start Meadow Brook, since where this conversation started, and then, and then move on from there.
For enforcement. Uh, we have full service.
Thank you. I have one question. Brian Green, 102 Jackson Drive. You had mentioned before about how you were collecting data, and you had the camera readouts. And sometimes they're off, sometimes they're on. Was there a difference in speed when they were on versus when they were off?
Yes. People drive faster when they're off.
Okay. So, my question is, why don't we just have speed readout permanently?
Right.
Why don't we have the readout of what your speed is?
All the time.
All the time? If that slows people down, why not put them up all the time?
We have them up.
No, they move, rotate, they rotate.
They're rarely on River Drive.
Rare, rare.
Rarely.
The cost of the units to put them up is excessive. I mean, the units we
We have a couple of units that we rotate around.
But if we had one, if we had them permanently, reading out what the speed is, you just said, is a dramatic difference between when they're off versus when they're on. So, it seems to me to be reasonable, why don't we put some in that are always on? That slows people down. On that road.
Way up the cost between And not, that could be the next step.
I mean, how much could that cost? I see them all the time. They have like the solar panel or something?
Five thousand dollars a piece.
So, but this is a lot more. Right. So, could we do that as another test? Yeah, as a more cost-effective measure?
I don't think that's addressing pedestrian safety. Now, you're just, now you're just dealing with speed, speed of, of the vehicles and not addressing the safety of pedestrians.
Why couldn't we do both?
Uh, next question.
Hi, Rich Me, 130 River Drive. I, I, I think this is a very good presentation. A lot of work went into it, I'm sure. Um, I, walking on the east side of River and creating that pathway, I think, makes a lot of sense. I get concerned about, as you were saying earlier, people who are walking with their back to the incoming traffic. Who, and especially, I think, on that curve between Jackson and Meadow Brook. And so, if, if you're going to look at doing bollards, um, just partially, I would suggest doing it there as well partially because that, that just strikes me as an area where, you know, it's harder when you're walking with your back to traffic, right? You have to have faith that nobody's gonna come running into you. Um, and it also gets a little bit narrowed there, too, I think. So...
Yeah. In any case, that's, yeah, the curve itself create, I, I think that's a great one. Without some sort of protection there, we're, we're gonna have folks cutting that corner coming down. Because we have that now today.
Right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take them. And, and again, listen, I, I don't, I think I made it clear that, that, uh, I don't think this is a perfect solution, but I think this is a good step forward. Um, so I'm completely open to doing this and then coming back in six months and talking about how it went and, and considering it next spring. But if the board's okay and wants to move this direction.
Can you say whether or not you'd be open, excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you say whether or not you'd be open to the permanent speed reduction signs if it truly is slowing people down?
I, I gotta say, that's a bridge too far for me at this point. I, I, again, my focus is on pedestrian safety here.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I want to be able to be consistent in what we do, not only on this stretch of road, but on the sixty miles of road that we're responsible throughout the township. And we're not, nothing about the speed numbers that we've seen here indicates any sort of radical intervention in terms of vehicle and vehicle or vehicle control on that road. And, and if, if I was to use the data, um, from River Drive as a standard for that sort of intervention, then I'd be putting those signs everywhere, and they would start to lose their effect in this anywhere. Um, I, let's do this and then see what sort of effect the narrowing that the lanes has on the overall traffic. And if that's enough to bring the speed down to twenty-seven or twenty-six miles an hour in the eighty-fifth percentile, then, then we've accomplished our goals. If we get six months from now and we're looking at these numbers and we have a narrow cart with people still going thirty-four miles an hour, well then, you know, I'm open to having a completely different conversation.
Got it. Thank you, thank you.
That works for me.
Okay.
All right, Paul. With that being said, we're gonna move on. Uh, planning and zoning business, uh, so let's just close off. I have your all of the others.
Okay. Um, LTTC 187, Baltimore Ridge. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the acceptance of portion of the rights waived proposed as part of our subdivision plan named the Dr. Bullmore, Mallory Street, Gettard Drive, Cone Drive, Guinness Drive, Burn Road, Volker, Bull, Arthorne Road, Goldport Court, Caronte Avenue, Elliot Street, Gold Drive, Salvatore, Fort Palm Street, Plain Street, and extensions of both Henshaw Drive and Henshaw Drive.
I'll second that. All those papers, can I say aye?
Aye.
Uh, LTTC 316, Free, uh, Pahai's Land, or, uh, Plant. I think it's going to be free, or it's a steam packet, packet, actually, it's a On behalf of the developer, for an extension of time until August 11, 2025, report, uh, grade five, I was planning to open it down.
Second.
Uh, question second, I'll move the papers in, Chris, aye?
Aye.
Uh, you, business?
Resolution 2025-06, authorization for approving operational support activities for participating members of the West Township, I, the department. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2025-06, authorizing the approval of the operational support activities for participating members of the West Township, I, the department.
Uh, I'll second it. All of those members, can I say aye?
Aye.
Uh, Resolution Number 2025-06, accepting of Dr. Bullmore, Mallory Street, Gettard Drive, Gold Drive, Guinness Drive, Burn Road, Volker, Bull, Arthorne Road, Gold Drive, Salvatore, Fort Palm Street, Plain Street,